It's 3:30. This board meeting is going to try to be over at 5 o'clock prompt. So, we'll try and do our business, but we're not going to hurry. If we have to table things and put them off to the next meeting, we'll do that. But we're supposed to be out here at 5:00. There's a couple of people that need to be gone by then. So, you know, please silence your cell phones. And we're going to have a prayer by hand tonight, and then we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we lift this board up to you. Please give us your strength, your wisdom. Help us to govern with humility, with honesty, with civility. In Jesus' name, amen.
George, can you do the pledge?
Ready, pledge.
By Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, George Anna.
Director Van Witten.
Here.
Director Ann Rice.
Here.
Director Mark Solow.
Here.
Vice President Cliff Jacobson.
Here.
President Joe Hallow.
Here.
I have to read this at every meeting. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Approval of the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the ...
Move we approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion about the consent calendar?
We're all being encouraged to come, yes? Should be a nice luncheon.
Yes, it's, I don't know if it's open to the public or not, but, anyway. Is it open to the public, George, for your recognition luncheon?
Employees.
Employees and us.
Employees only.
That's what I meant by "us."
Can I have a mo, we have a motion. All in favor say aye.
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 And, preview, I want to read something that's on the agenda.
Bill.
Yes.
May we get a roll call now that we have a resolution?
Okay, that's right. You reminded me and I'd forgotten already. Okay, roll call.
Director Witten?
Aye.
Director, uh, Director Rice?
Aye.
Director Solow?
Aye.
Director Jacobson?
Yes.
President Hallow?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Paul, well, I said president here before. George, would you please stand? This is a proclamation, a resolution of appreciation by the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District presented to George M. Barber. Whereas George Barber has served as General Manager for the Paradise Irrigation District from September the first, 2004, through May 8th, 2017. And whereas George Barber has provided unceasing support to the district and has given the district the benefit of his knowledge, his ideas, innovating leadership and friendship. And whereas George Barber has taken a proactive approach to water supply and many other needs of the district, especially encouraging and seeking grant opportunities to leverage additional funding for the implementation of capital projects and the maintenance, operation, repair, and ongoing operation of existing district facilities. And whereas George Barber has exhibited exemplary leadership to the Paradise Irrigation District directing the operations, maintenance, and general affairs of the district and its facilities, as well as providing support and direction to the management team, staff, and Board of Directors. And whereas George Barber has played an integral role in representing the district through community outreach programs to customers, community service groups, and creating partnerships with local and government agencies to help improve and protect the watershed and improve water supply resources. And whereas George Barber has guided the district through a four-year statewide drought, implementation of water service rates and charges through Proposition 218 has been instrumental, major projects including but not limited to Magalia Water Bypass Project, Automated Meter Reading System, construction of the new corporation yard facilities, and relocation of the administration office, water rights petition for extension, and planning and design of the proposed process waters recycle project. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Paradise Irrigation District extends its thanks and appreciation to George Barber for his outstanding dedication to the district and the public, and wish him well in his new endeavor. Passed and adopted. All in favor, board, say aye.
Aye.
Let's give him a handful. Now, we go to the real work tonight, and that is general manager recruitment replacement. Recruitment process for new general manager. Action may be taken, you know, we'll open it up to the board. And after the board goes through some of this, we'll open it up to the public for comment. So, any board member want to speak first on the job description or whatever, if there's changes to be made? I mean, I mean, Dustin, do you want to make some proposals for changes?
I can kind of tee this up if you like. There's really no legal requirements here. It's a matter of preference, what the board thinks will get you the most qualified candidate you're looking for. So, some of the options, we've talked about, kind of posting and trade periodicals, which I don't even think, there's a fee for that, such as Aqua News, and I think there's another one that Director Jacobson is familiar with. You can hire a headhunter. That can be costly, but, you know, I don't know what the going rate, but it's typically three months or so of the new manager's starting salary. I think that's kind of ballpark. And there's any mixture of those options as well.
Do you have any suggestions on the verbiage of the job description or benefits?
Yeah, I would, well, one item, you need to tell us what you want to put in that posting. I think we'd want to describe briefly the district, the area, and then, you know, the would-be candidates are interested in the benefits package. So, I think that's an item that you would want to tell us. Maybe defining a salary range or defining a floor, so to speak. And then, you know, the GM salary will be not less than this amount, maybe more dependent on qualifications. So, I think you, as a board, need to tell us what you want to see and what you want to set. And then, we could try to craft that into language that would then go into a posting.
Yes, can I go first?
I think a couple of things, we, this is, it's probably appropriate that we establish a temporary committee of a couple of board members that have experience in using headhunters. I think Ann has stated that she's successfully been involved in those types of transactions before. So, I, we kind of have it backwards. I think we should have looked at the interim manager first and then at the replacement because we need to do our due diligence, take our time, and make the right selection. And in order to do that, I think that there are a number of things we can do. Obviously, we can come up with the completed job description as we want it to be. We need to agree on that first. Then, we need to put that out. There are a lot of places, as you suggested, Dustin, that we can do that at no cost. We should obviously use those resources. But definitely, it sounds like one of the proven ways, especially in our type or line of businesses, Ann's experience is that she has a firm that has successfully found qualified individuals. So, we certainly want to look at that as well. So, I think it's kind of premature to make a decision on exactly how we're going to do that tonight. I think the only action we should take would be that we need to form this committee. We need to review the job description, and then we need to put that out appropriately and give it time to give us qualified candidates to review and take our time to make a good selection. So, in order to do that, we need to take care of the immediate needs. So, that's all I have to say on that.
Just to add to that, Cliff, the organization, if you decide to go to a recruiting agency, they will actually help you with the job description, to update it and make sure all the legal bells and whistles are in there. And they'll come to us first to create a job description, see exactly what we want as a board, meet with us as a board and other staff members, and then produce a job description and then produce the, talk about salary range, et cetera, and produce a brochure and ...
Would they be amenable to coming and sitting down and talking with the committee to tell us what they would do for us and before we actually engage in a contract with them?
I could, I don't know. I can find that out, though.
I mean, just to, just so we could find out what is roughly it's going to cost us and what they're going to do for that, and then if we decide to engage with them, then, then of course, we can sign a contract with them.
Well, if you, if you look at the sample that's in this brochure, it was about $20,000, not to be more than 25 for a district manager. Or I think it was 2013 or 2014. Took three months. They did everything from the beginning to the final, even helped negotiate the offer. Met with the board two or three times, decided how many interviews you want to bring back for a second interview. I mean, it's pretty extensive what they do.
If I can interrupt, you have in your agenda packet, just as a reminder, a sample request for proposal that, you know, it's no cost to the district. You publish this, you receive those proposals back from firms, exactly like you're saying, that can, can perform these types of services. So, if you want, you know, it's obviously up to the board, but if you want to get that ball rolling, that's one item. We've agendized it. You can take action, authorize us to finalize that, publish it, and then the committee or the board, however you want to review them, can, can then start receiving and considering those proposals. And we've, we've put in there as, as the tasks that, exactly what you say. To meet with board members, to establish the, you know, the candidate qualities that you're looking for, the job description and such. So, RFPs typically take what, 45 days? What do we usually, something like that? 30 days?
30 days.
Did I do this one 30 days?
Yeah.
So, we're talking about sort of tabling A and then, and then making an action, vote on B?
No.
No?
Yeah, so we still have more discussion on which way we want to proceed, it sounds like.
We're not talking about that. By the, part of the discussion is, this is the bylaws of the district. In its bylaws, there's a district manager's description of job in great detail. And it was, this issue was last revived in August the 4th of 2004. It gives all the different things here, employment standards, knowledge of, ability to, desirable qualification, typical physical activities, special requirements, examples of duties. And under the, and here's the definition. Under policy direction of Board of Directors, be charged of operations, functions, administrative affairs of the district. It represents the board's policies, programs with employees, community organizations, the general public, to bear budget requests, make recommendations to the board for final expenditure levels, to be responsible for employee relationship, to be responsible for development, maintenance of district facilities and service, other job-related duties as required. There's another description around somewhere, but this one talks about principles and employment standards, knowledge of. Principles imply practices of public administration, including administrative analysis, fiscal planning and control, and policy and program development. Basic knowledge of engineering, construction principles, practical planning, design, and construction of this district. That's basic knowledge of engineering. It doesn't talk about a certified engineer. Basic water treatment and distribution principles and practices. Laws, rules, ordinances, and legislative process controlling irrigation, district functions, programs, operation. Organization, operations, and problems of special districts. Research and evaluation methodologies, cost estimating and contract administration. So, Sid goes on for a little bit more. I'll give you the public personnel employee, employee practices and legislation, public impressed relations, principles of supervision, management, and general administration. And then, it talks about ability to plan, organize, direct, coordinate, supervise the function, activities, and organization, achieve efficient operations, meet service goals. Exercise leadership, authority, management tactically and effectively. Prepare administration and district budgeting and fiscal control process. Now, that's somewhat changed because Kevin's responsibilities were updated sometime. Collect and analyze data for a variety of topics, effective organization, coordination, and administration of personnel committees, overall development. And what it amounts to, in my opinion, we could hire somebody with a business background, someone with an attorney business background. Most recently, South Feather hired a business manager for their district. They hired somebody completely out of the water business to run their district because they wanted it to be in a business-like thing, and they had an excellent staff just below the manager to do all the different water-related things. But the manager's principal responsibilities were like what's been described here. And so, my thought on this is that we need a business manager. We need somebody that can look at long-term things. One of the poorest things we have right now in our district is our financial controls are not very good. We don't have much in the way of a reserve. We don't, we're spending money we really don't have. We'll have to borrow more and so forth. Now, Kevin's going to talk about this at the regular board meeting. I saw it was on the agenda, already on the proposed agenda. So, to me, we need somebody that has the leadership qualities and business acumen. And the difference on certified engineers, there's lots of engineers, available civil engineers in this area that will sign off on projects to make sure they, work plans are set and all of that. So, to me, both the intern, whoever that's going to be, should feel the same sort of qualities. Hopefully, we could find somebody that's semi-retired, that has a water background or has business background, the board would feel comfortable with running a district for hopefully not a very long time. I think it won't take much effort to have a new general manager. The district has a good reputation, has excellent employees, and we should be able to get the job done, I would think, within a month or two.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, this is, this is a kind of a generalized, you know, job description. So, we wouldn't preclude anyone from applying, basically.
Right.
What we would do, would we narrow it down, you know, according to who, who, the person that we feel would be the best fit for the district. It could be, it could be an engineer, it could be a business person, it could be someone totally related. But we're not, we're not, this doesn't preclude someone from applying for ...
No, not at all.
So, so I think, I think ...
It actually opens it up.
Right. But what I'm saying is, you know, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to see who applies, and then we can make our decisions.
Yes, very much so.
I need some clarification. We've got agenda items A, B, C, and D. Are we discussing all of the above? Or, because we've sort of jumped around, and I'm, I'm kind of wondering.
What we're doing is for ...
I mean, A says recruit process, recruitment process for a new general manager. Action may be taken.
So, well, then, to do that, we need to have a job description.
Correct. So, so that's D.
Number one thing is a job ...
Oh, excuse me, C.
Yeah, a job description, which we have the guidance of the bylaws.
Right. So, C should have been A because modified terms of employment for new general manager, including revisions to agreements, salary scale, job description, other terms.
Well, here's the way it works, Cliff. We go by this, I can change some things in order. The president of the board can do this. The board members basically cannot unless you vote as a unit and you say you want this taken care of. All of you, you know, majority, three, say, okay, well, let's change this to this. But one of us cannot change the order.
No, I understand. But just for the sake of getting things done in a timely fashion, we're, it seems like we're putting the cart in front of the horse.
We're doing, to my mind, priority. Who are we going to hire?
Are we going to, are we going to just talk about all of them then in context here? As agenda items for ...
Well, actually, when you take the general manager and the interim general manager, they're both going to have to have somewhat the same qualifications.
Okay, okay.
So, what the first thing we have to do is agree on the general manager's qualifications. Now, we've got, this is a guide, and it, the bylaws are part of the rules that we govern ourselves by. And then, we have a newer version of it. So, we need to say, somebody needs to make a motion at this point and say, well, let's go by this or that, and then we can go through it and see if there's anything we want to change, the detail. It's not easy, and it's not going to be short, but it can be done tonight. As soon as it's done, then we can turn to Tanya the Dales to put out a publication and talk about that. That can go to the communications committee to bring back to the board and decide on what we want, the community thing.
Okay.
And what we want. So, but first, we have to tackle this general manager.
Well, modifying the terms of the employment for the new general manager is not something I think we can do in 10 minutes.
No.
So, so, are we saying we're just going to agree that we will modify? But it says here, modified terms of employment, action will be taken. Well, we, we're not going to modify them on the fly here tonight.
Okay, we're going to have to go through it and see if there's, there's one that's been edited on the screen and see if people, if, it has to start with a motion.
Okay.
And we can second a motion on individual parts of it. Okay, employment agreement. Anybody want to make a motion on any part of what's been put here? Have you read through it? If you disagree or agree with it, you can take it by duties A, B, C, so forth.
Well, I didn't see anything when I reviewed it that piqued my interest about being incorrect or needing amendment. Once I read through the line through in corrections, it seemed pretty generic, and it'll have to be filled in at a later date. So, if we're just, if we're just going to approve or disapprove this generic contract without any specific information in it, then ...
Well, you're going to have to have that on there, match up with the bylaws, too.
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
This, we're waiting for the screen so the folks in the audience can't see this. But in a minute, it'll come up. What, what the board is looking at is revisions in, in red line format to George's current agreement. Your instruction to me, the last time this was discussed at, at the special meeting, was to go ahead and, and take a shot at legal counsel, just make some revisions, include blanks where you need board direction. More to spur discussion and begin the process of, you know, eventually, when, you know, candidates start expressing interest, they're going to want to see the terms and conditions of their potential employment with the district. So, you don't need to finalize this tonight, but it's intended to spur discussion so that at that time, when candidates start, you know, asking for information about the job and, and what are the requirements and such, that this will be in a form that we can then share to those interested applicants.
So, should this just have been an informational item tonight, then, and not one for action?
Discuss.
Because we can't really approve or disapprove it.
But you can, you can give me directions. So, for example, there's a blank, I believe there's blanks for salary. If you're interested tonight, you can set that. You don't have to. But there's blanks in here where we agendized it. If you want, you can take action, but you're not, you don't, you're not required to.
So, do we have to make a motion if we want to talk about this?
Yes, we have to make a motion in a second.
Okay.
Or do we get by a ...
So, I make a motion that we open discussion on the employment agreement on page 48.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Do we have to say, all in favor?
Go ahead, do whatever you want to do.
No, no.
Do we have to say, do we have to vote on that, that we made a motion?
No.
No?
It's, we moved to second, and now the discussion starts.
Thank you.
I'm going to start right off.
Okay, go for it.
Is there any advantage?
First, a motion in a second. Then, discussion.
If it doesn't get a second, we go ahead.
Get a second.
You said it, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Sorry. Dustin, is there any advantage to dropping the general out of the title? Just make it district manager. Is there an advantage or disadvantage?
Most districts' managers are district or general managers. There are some managers, or there's even some executive officers.
My title was district manager. We changed it to general at one point, just because it's more generalized and ...
Okay. I've seen it both ways. I'm just curious.
I prefer district.
I prefer district as well.
Actually, I prefer drop the general.
I think district manager is more clear.
Yeah.
That's fine. We can make that change.
What was your motion, Ann? Is that ...
So, so we're going to do item by item as, with each change, we're going to make a motion and then decide?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, I would, I would like to make a motion to change the title of this job to district manager.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mark seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, next item.
May I jump in again? There's going to be a number of other documents that have the title general manager. Your policies, your job description. So, is that your motion that we're going to clean up? Okay.
Change them all.
Including the policy, policy manual.
Okay, we need another motion on whatever issue you want to do.
Nope. Okay.
And so, I, we can still just discuss.
Oh, yeah.
On page 51. I'm getting really confused.
So, wait a minute. So, I make a motion that Dustin is authorized to make the changes in the supportive documentation in our bylaws which match the revision that Ann just had approved.
Didn't we just do that?
I think we just did that.
We just already approved that.
Cliff, last time we did it, that's how we did it. It just covered everything. You'd be surprised where that word shows up. And it took, I don't know how long it took George Anna to retype all that stuff, but it took a while. Okay, next item.
Okay. So, on page 51, where it talks about a car and a phone, I don't underst, I kind of know some about the history of why there's no car now, but wouldn't, wouldn't it be prudent? I mean, isn't it typical that an executive position comes with a car? So, wouldn't we want to offer that?
George, do you want to give?
I can give the background on that. So, when I first came to the district, they offered a stipend for vehicle. I don't remember the number, $300, $400 a month. I pay $400 a month. And then, at a later date, after actually a couple of years of no increase in my salary, I negotiated a district vehicle, and it actually was cheaper for the district than the stipend that they were paying. And so, I had a district vehicle for a while. And then, when we were cutting back and finances were getting low a couple of years ago, I gave up the district vehicle because it was relatively new, so we were able to sell it, garnered $25,000 in cash, and since then, I've been just, I'm reimbursed at IRS rates for business mileage.
Okay.
So, you, you can endeavor on getting them a vehicle, or you can change the contract so that you provide a stipend, or stipend is pretty normal.
And am I, am I clear in reading this, that when you had a car, the district charged you $100 a month for any personal use you might have on that car?
Yes.
So, liability-wise, does the district have a lesser or a greater liability if they provide the vehicle?
JPIA, it really didn't change any rates to JPIA. I can tell you that they, they said it's allowed if you contract it for personal use, but their preference was not personal use.
Why don't we leave it like it is for now?
Without a car?
Can we make a motion to that?
That's what I proposed.
That's what we proposed.
It's there, but discussion, maybe we want to bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, that's ...
We want to bring it back. Because it's gone now.
It is gone.
Yeah, it's gone.
What are your thoughts? You feel ...
I, I feel that it's an executive position. I feel to be competitive. Most executive positions come with a vehicle.
I agree. It doesn't have to be a pickup truck. I think George had a pickup truck.
Just waiting for a motion, that's all.
Yeah.
Could be just a ...
Okay, so, so, I make a motion that we make amendments to include a vehicle.
Then you need to talk. Then you need to talk.
Get them to listen to you.
I make a motion that we amend this to include a vehicle.
I'll second.
Great. Now, let's discuss.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't have a great distance. Many of the cities, they've got to drive all over the place. We're pretty small, you know? You drive mile two here, mile two there. I don't think it's necessary. Again, our goal is to try to be as frugal as we can.
Well, this person may not live in the district. Is there a requirement for them?
I'm sure not. If they don't live here.
They shouldn't live in the district, nor does Kevin. They don't live in the district, nor does Kevin live in the district.
I think they struck down all those laws.
You've got to be careful about that.
If they don't live here, that's even more important that we don't give them a vehicle.
But that's an incentive for them.
Yeah, because, because we're not going to offer a huge salary, so I'm kind of trying to make it more attractive.
Add a little bit here and there.
I, I'd like to address it from a professionalism standpoint. I provide late model, good vehicles for all of my employees. They're uniform, they're signed, and they look professional. And when my employees are driving around from location to location, they look uniform and professional. And I'm not sure that I would want them showing up in the vehicles that they drive to one of my customers.
But that's different. Our employees have that, too. They all drive vehicles with insignias on them, all drive, all wear uniforms. But that's a little different than executive positions.
Well, if the, if the district or general manager is representing us at any types of affairs or meetings, whether it be with regulatory agencies or public...
He's not going to be wearing a uniform or driving a vehicle that says PID on it. And even if he would, he parks in the parking lot and nobody sees it. You, you know my leanings now, don't you?
No, that's fine.
That's fine.
If you work for me, Dan, you'd be driving my vehicle with spray kim on the window.
There are, there are times where, where, let's say that the manager, the district manager would be taking someone to lunch, business associates, you know, all in the name of the district.
Yeah. But again, he's not, that's different than where, the angle he's going. Because he's talking uniforms, names on trucks. No, that's, that's different.
Right.
Our employees do that.
But I'm saying, there's a lot of activity that the district manager will be doing that requires them to, a vehicle to get from point A to point B. That's what I'm trying to say.
And what we pay them? They don't have a decent vehicle. They make three times, three times what I make and I drive a decent vehicle.
They want to go to the treatment plant, got to run up the treatment plant. So do they grab a truck? Does the manager grab a truck? Is that what you're saying? They grab one of the trucks?
He probably has wheels.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. I, I don't, I don't think it requires somebody to get in their private vehicle that, that when they're employed with the district.
For the last two...
Perfect time to...
For the last two years, since he let his truck go, our manager has been doing that?
I, I realize that.
And we've ridden around with him in his vehicle.
Okay, when I got on the board, George had his own vehicle at that time. It was later on at the district, bottom of the district. So this thing can be changed if the new manager comes and a year later or something asks to change the vehicle used, then we could consider it again. But we need to get something done now. So, if somebody called for a vote?
Very quickly, to Ann's point, though, we're, we're not going to be offering them as big of a salary or as many stipends as they would get in a larger water district. And we don't have PERS. There's a lot of things that they can get at other locations that we can't offer. So if we're trying to cast a wide net and get qualified people, you don't get qualified people on the cheap. And so...
Well, let's, let's decide this, please.
Sure.
We've debated it a little bit. Now, let's have a vote. Okay? And first, George, Anna, can you repeat what the motion is?
So the motion was to amend the employment agreement to provide a vehicle.
They're, we're going to provide a vehicle or what?
Yeah. Yes.
We provide a vehicle, company truck.
Vehicle. Whatever it is, they choose.
Company truck, a vehicle.
Company vehicle.
Doesn't have to be a truck.
Okay, all right. Now, the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it passes four to one. Next issue on this thing.
Oh, I would like to make a motion to discuss the salary.
Certainly. You got a second?
I'll second it.
According to this, third paragraph that...
Which page?
On page 51. Still on 51.
Can I just jump in and apologize to the public? We had a power glitch, which reset that screen, which is why you don't get to see it on the wall. So that's why.
Well, as much as we're discussing it, I think we're covering it pretty well so far.
You want to climb up there and...
Everybody just...
So the, the last line of the third paragraph, paragraph discusses a cost of living adjustment each year equivalent to social security. And I can see that, that we negotiated those terms during the drought, when we, our, our reserves were dwindling and we were in some fiscal...
Yes, that's what happened, the agreement with the union and our employees, everybody was at 2%. Whatever social security was.
Right.
And that was 2% then. So that's where we ended up. We're coming up on negotiations again from the union. So we can say, whatever you want to do, but we did the 2% because of the situation. I don't think financially we're out of that yet, so...
Yeah, this wasn't 2%. I think over the last three years, it amounted to 1.3%.
Yes.
So that's the only mechanism or discussion I see in this contract for a raise. So there should be a mechanism, I believe, that...
So you've, you've raised a good point. We, this used to have an evergreen provision. What I mean by that, it didn't have a term that had a fixed ending. We're proposing that you get away from that. You need to tell us, I don't know what we're proposing, three years, five years, but some term. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you can include this as kind of an automatic COLA. Or since we're going to have a term, be it three years, five years, whatever it is, you can spell out, it'll be this percent each year of the term of the agreement. Again, it's board prerogative.
That's what I would, I would like to see, maybe this line stricken and a mechanism following the employee's annual review, a basis for a raise. Because otherwise, there's no incentive for someone to meet their goals or, you know, the, the board's going to set for them if there's no, there should be a financial incentive in there.
Okay. So, so it's not an automatic, it'll just, the performance evaluations is automatic and then the discussion thereafter will be whether a COLA is merited?
Right.
Okay.
And then also, I don't know how the board feels about this, but I'm going to throw this out there. Could I?
In that paragraph, are you going to change paragraphs? Are you still there?
I'm, I'm...
Because one other word that can be very critical is shall versus will.
Well, I'm going to delete the last sentence.
I, I, I understand where you're going. So if that's the will of the board, I'll propose some language.
Okay.
It's that the performance evaluation is mandatory, the COLA is discretionary based on performance.
Well, I guess, yeah, you could delete the whole paragraph then and put the salary in with the performance evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then that would take care of the shall. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then...
We have a second? If you want to make more of your motions first, Ann.
Okay, so I guess we're going to make, the first motion is just to delete this paragraph.
Okay.
So on page 51, I make a motion to delete paragraph three, EB.
Three?
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in three?
Any more discussion? Paragraph three is what, EB?
Yes.
Yep.
Beginning annually... Okay, you want to delete that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. What's the next one? Folks, I'm sorry, this is sort of boring in a way, but you now you know how boring it can be to do government work. That's why it takes so long. I tell people, you know, something doesn't get done, just government work, you know? Anyway, Cliff thinks my sense of humor is not very good and so does my wife. Oh, I love your sense of humor.
So while we're on this page, I'd like to make a motion to discuss supplemental retirement benefits.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
What do you want to do with, you got to tell us what you're going to do.
Well, we're, oh, I'd like to eliminate those.
You want to eliminate supplemental benefits?
Yes.
Who seconds it?
I'll second it.
Second?
Yeah, I think I...
Okay, discussion.
Mr. President, before you get into discussion, just as a reminder, I think you have members of the public that would like to speak to some of these issues.
All right. I, I thank you, Dustin. I'll, we'll give it a break here pretty quick, but we need to, we're finally getting them down the road, so we don't really want to slow up the train too much. Okay, we have a second to...
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Any more discussion about it?
The discussion, well, I'd like to...
Just eliminate it, she said.
Yeah, eliminate. The general manager gets an extra, besides, on top of the 12% retirement, he gets an extra 3.5% toward his retirement. And I'd like to eliminate that benefit.
Any more discussion? Call a question?
Mr. President?
Say aye. What?
I, I believe the concern from the public was that you're, you're taking votes prior to them having any input.
Okay, aye.
So that was the concern of the public.
Okay, well, we'll start the more concerned, but we're going to get this one voted. Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now, the public has a concern about something that we've probably already settled.
Can I just make a clarification?
Sure.
That it's, and I believe you're correct, is that it's supplemental retirement, not supplemental benefit.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, so I think you said supplemental benefit in your, in your motion.
I'm sorry.
You did say that, and I was confused a little.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that clarification, Kevin.
Still get the holidays off.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, anybody in the public who has up to five minutes to come up and you have something to talk about that we've already gone through? Oh, there you are, Thunder and Mike.
Thunder.
Thor has spoken.
Okay, did somebody wanted to discuss something? Bob?
As far as everything that you're talking about here, I think a lot of this stuff is negotiable. I think a lot of this stuff is, certain things that you want to talk about, but quite honestly, I think it's more important that we concentrate on finding a permanent general manager, manager, district manager, manager, whatever the title you want to put on it. And as far as the pay goes and everything, you can put that pay from as, as small as you want up to as high as you think it needs to take to get representatives to come. But it's based on what you're looking for. All that could be vaguely wrote out in advertising. I don't think we need to get really nitpicky over a lot of this stuff. There's, there's a few good items on here I, I, I see you talking about. Another one, like 401K match at the company does and stuff, I think that should be looked at closely, and how much should be allowed. You know, that's kind of overused in a few... Just to comment on that, and I, and I see that we should continue focusing on this here, task of, of the general manager. Work on that. I, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time worrying about temporary, an interim or whatever. I'd just like to concentrate on that issue and deal with it. Then when you get to the point where you know a little more of what you really want, they don't know what you want in a temporary, if that happens to happen to us. I just assume that we work through the books the next month or two, whatever it takes. With you guys leaving, and, and we'll find a general manager with good fresh eyes. That's what we need, good fresh eyes to look into everything that needs to be accomplished. Thanks.
Next vote.
Got here in 1947, for those of you who didn't. I'd just like to say, George went on vacation every year, and I'm glad he did. But remember, the building didn't fall down, the pipes didn't blow up, people didn't boycott paying their bills. So I think maybe you guys ought to talk about who ran the ship when he was gone. I know you could call him on the telephone, I understand all that, but somebody ran the ship when he was gone. And the plant, Jim's here, he seems to run the plant okay, so you don't have to worry about that. So let's not get in a great big hurry for this. And please, don't put a pay salary on it, because after all, it's negotiable anyway. If God come in the door to run the place, you'd want to give him a lot more money than you would if, if somebody else come in. So I think you're narrowing your odds when you do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren.
Okay, any other people want to comment? I don't know your name offhand, so you need to...
Sorry, I'll do this myself. Martin Nichols. It seems like the threshold decision you need to make is whether or not you're going to hire a recruiter and go through that process. If you do, you're going to be paying for their expertise. And they'll have their eye on the market, they'll know what other districts are paying, they will know what recent recruitments have done. And all this stuff will be negotiable once you, once you hire them, the salary, the benefits, all of that stuff. Having, you know, an example of an employment agreement, just the one that the existing manager had would be sufficient for that process. Once you go through the RFP process, you'll get four, five qualified candidates, you'll narrow it down to two or three you want to talk to. You'll be able to bring them in, theoretically, closed session, ask them all the questions they want about their strategy, about how they do it, answer all your questions. But if you're going to hire a recruiter, make that decision and get their expertise to help you make these other decisions.
Thanks, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
Okay, we're going to go back to the board now and...
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we table the approval of this contract, because as we all stated earlier, it is negotiable. We really haven't hammered it out. We really don't have to make a decision on it tonight, because it's going to be more important that we flesh it out, once we decide exactly who it is we're looking for and how we're going to find them. So I think we can move on to other business and table action on modifying the terms of employment until we have a better understanding of what we want to say.
I have a second.
Absolutely. Because I've had that written down for a while, you know? Because I kind of like what Cliff said early on. Let's slow down, take it easy, we're not in a rush. Don't know why we have to hammer out little details like this now. Let's go ahead and get a subcommittee, let's get a couple of people to work on a bunch of these details, so we don't have to bore everybody with it hour after hour. And then come forward to the board with some of the suggestions. But in the meantime, the most important decision that we have to make tonight is, what are we gonna, who are we going to get, how are we going to proceed immediately with getting a word out there? Over the next few weeks, month, whatever, we can hammer out some of these details, but let's get the advertising going. Play with this later.
I'm gonna ask for Tanya, who's in Dale, Mark, Dale.
Are we gonna...
Just, did there's suggestion...
I made a motion, it was seconded, I believe.
Yeah, I did.
No, no, I'm just asking them for information on your motion, not on anything else.
Correct.
The motion was to table this.
To table this.
Did we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Can we vote?
Yes. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, table passes. For information, since we want to move to what we need to promote this, the most qualified person in the audience for that is Tanya and Mark. Can you give us some ideas of what you need that you don't have right now, to be able to put together a handout?
Start advertising.
This is for promoting the job.
I believe we offered an example of a previous...
Right, I've got the copy of that here.
Right, so I think that gives a pretty good idea of what we're looking for. I think that the board needs to be, I mean, anytime you're trying to accomplish a hire, the more specific you are with what you need and what you want and what you're offering, the quicker the process goes. And if you're at a place where you can't decide that yet, then you're gonna end up taking a little more time doing that. We stand ready, though, to do whatever you might need us to do in terms of describing the, the position and the opportunity in a, in a positive way, and also describing paradise as a positive place to, to live and work. And then, any specific questions I can answer? Bill, did I touch on that?
Just looking at what you have down here, towards the last one you did.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good generic example, I think.
And that's what...
You have most of what you need to put this out, actually. Looking at it really does.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we've done enough to...
And it wouldn't cost much at all to modify that to, to your liking, and then they'll be able to distribute it.
Okay.
I have a question, if, if we hired a recruiting firm, what, what do you see your role as?
Well, I think it depends on the recruiting firm. Some of those are very self-contained, they have their vendors that they want to work with, and they have their policies and procedures that they follow. I think that it would be possible that they might need our help, but it might be likely that, that they would do that in-house or with their own contacts, and that would be very appropriate, and that would make a lot of sense. Oh, I see, okay, thank you. Thanks for answering. Anything else, though?
No, I don't, it took me up to the board, they wanted to ask you more questions.
All right, thank you.
Now, what do we want to do next, since you've...
Well, I have a question, President. Here in recruitment process for new general manager, okay, this is what we've been dancing around so far this evening. Can we, what's the procedure for creating a, a short-term committee here, that I think should include Ann, and I'm not sure who the other individual would be at this point, but to...
You call it an ad hoc committee, the president appoints it. You, as a board, as far as I'm concerned, can tell me who you'd like to have on the committee, and that's what I'll form. I don't have, I'm not going to be on it, I know that. So form an ad hoc committee, a short-term committee, to come up with the answer, so who would like to be on the committee?
Cliff, after you.
Could I say, just, do you think we really need to do that, to explore, you want to, for the purpose of exploring hiring a consultant? Or you don't think we're ready to make a decision on whether we should go down?
Well, no, I think we're, I think we do, obviously recruitment process, we need to...
Start immediately.
It's a little ambiguous, it just says recruitment process for new general manager, action, what action? Do we, do we vote that we, that we explore... Do we vote that we explore our different opportunities? So, so it's a little gray, and I want to flesh that out, and if, if we got to take action on this, what does it action mean? Creating a committee to, to look at the different ways that we can entertain going after a new manager?
Well, there's a request for proposal to hire a consultant in this packet, the action may be taken. And that's number two, considering retaining a consultant. So you're not ready to move on that, you want to do an ad hoc committee first?
No, if we can, I, I, I think the two of them should have been combined, probably.
Yeah, I do, too.
I, I, I mean, because the first one, unless it's approved, you can't go on to B. So I guess we got to vote that we're all unanimous that we're going to start the process, and then we can go on to B. So I make a motion that we approve the recruitment process for a new general manager.
Dan's got to come.
Okay, Dan?
It's all right.
Will you second it, and then you can have your say, Dan?
She seconded it, that's right. Well, I was hoping, when you suggested subcommittee, ad hoc committee, I was in agreement with that, because of the fact that I think that with your knowledge of, I've seen you play on the computer, and you're knowledgeable, if you were to meet with Mark and Tanya, say Cliff, if you and Ann and Mark and Tanya met, would we have to hire a consultant? I'm not sure we do. I don't, I don't have the answer to this, I haven't been here before, but I kind of think that we should be able to, these days with the internet, what it is, and with all of these agencies that you're discussing, that we could potentially get our advertising into, do we need to spend additional monies to get something that would get us anything any better? I don't know. But that's what I was hoping that this committee would potentially look into, is, do we really need to spend $30,000 on a, on a headhunter?
This is where I am on that. This is going to be the most important decision this board makes. You know, just don't even think about the recycle project.
Correct.
And this is where you do need to spend some money.
Okay.
If you want a professional job, this is an executive position.
Because they're going to have the, the contacts, the, the greater ability to know every...
If you've been in the business of doing that for many years, have all the contacts, know what to do, and to say that I could do that, that's not my area of expertise.
And that's what the committee, in my thinking, was for, is decide, do we, do we not need to, but if we can decide here tonight, that's great.
That's, my recommendation is, this is one place where we do need to spend a little money.
And I'm in agreement with Ann.
Yeah.
I think this is really...
I'm not adverse to that.
...decision, and, you know, we can come up with our own, you know, things that we want to look at a person, but they're the pros, and they can...
And we'll be very well served.
...a broad search, too, so...
Because they'll come to us at each step, we can be as involved and hands-on in the process as we want to, or as, you know...
Detached, or...
Right, and there's so many steps to it, and they come at each step, and create a updated job description, a brochure, what the, you know, we're changing the contract benefits, all those are all in there. And even they will negotiate and, and offer in the contract.
And I think, Dan, you're like I am, you're a small business owner, I'm a small business owner, and so is Bill. These two individuals, Ann and Mark, have worked for large organizations...
Agencies like that, yeah.
...and have used these professional services. I never have, and so I think one of the nice things, the strengths that we have on this
Diversity that we have, yeah.
...is that we can defer to people who have experience and knowledge in their, in their particular areas. So I hear what Ann's saying, I hear what Mark's saying, I respect their opinions, and I...
I think I'm leaning that direction, who would agree with that, now that I've already discussed that.
The cities of Chico and the cities of Wererville also use, for executive positions, use outside agencies as well.
And that's, and that's generally in the 20, 20-plus thousand range, is that what figure that?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, that's ballpark.
Yeah, that's not too bad.
Because of my ag background and being aware of the different water districts in the valley and what the pay scales are and stuff, for managers and how people ended up managing water districts down there, the scale is lower than here, for the most part. Financially, they'll have as mu, maybe not as much, in other cases, more. The districts, there's a pipeline, I talked to somebody the other day, and I said, by the way, George resigned and was leaving, and the guy who was talking to an engineer from another company just said, nothing. She already knew. And I thought, wow, this pipeline and this water is really efficient. And I would say, just wait a few weeks, two or three weeks, before we look into an employment agency to do the headhunting for us. I think if we put out a range of salaries, the information we've already gathered tonight, and we won't have applicants, we'll find out, in other words, in two or three weeks, because the word will get out to the water districts where there's men or women that are in, you know, maybe their second or third tier, they're not the managers there, that would like, that's how George came to us, would like a shot at a job like this, would come for less money. And so I, I, I don't, I, I'm being an optimist for a change, I don't think we're going to need a headhunter. I think what we're going to have to do is probably start sorting through resumes as they come in. Now that we announce that the job is open here, the only thing we need to discover tonight is, just what was suggested by Bob earlier, was a range of salaries.
May I make a observation? You do not have to decide tonight whether you want to retain a headhunter or not. You can decide to publish the RFP and request proposals, it's not going to commit you to that at a later date when you see those proposals, you can then decide.
And I'd also like to add, just to your point, Bill, the, that would, that would put all the responsibility on the five of us for this big decision. I would like the assistance of a professional company that's going to do the professional background checks, the, even a criminal background check, that's going to do everything, they're going to phone, prescreen them by phone, they're going to check to see, you know, their colleagues, where, you know, they're going to headhunt specific people they know that are working now that might be a good fit for us. I mean, and they're going to generate, like a, a check sheet, a score sheet in the interviews for us to use to grade them, and they're going to grade them first, before they, we even see them. And I, you know, I would just feel that it's money well spent to have professional assistance for this decision.
Okay, Georgiana, what's the motion?
The motion is to approve, approve the request for proposal to retain a consultant. This is the recruitment...
No, actually, actually, it was for recruitment, it was to start the recruitment process for new general manager.
Yeah, we passed that.
And, and I had made that motion, Dan had seconded it, we just need to vote yes, so we can move on to what we're talking about right now.
Okay, let's vote yes. What Cliff just told us, Georgiana's got it right now. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Now, Ann, make your motion on your headhunters.
Okay, so, so I would like to make a motion to send out a request for proposal for a consultant agency, to help, to help us with the hiring of a new district manager.
Second.
Further discussion?
I think I like the concept of a broader net, because even though I am sure that you're correct, that there is this very active pipeline, this pipeline is going to be a little more central. We're not going to get somebody from Kentucky that might be just super, Tennessee, or Arizona, or whatever, we're only going to be tapping into the local pipeline, so...
Statewide, isn't it?
Yeah.
Anybody in the public want to comment on this?
Of course, I don't know why anybody else in the rest of the United States would want to move to California, but... We're all trying to get out of here.
I think, in, in listening to Dustin and Cam, what's...
Who cares about my opinion? Mike Zuccolillo, an alternate idea would be, you know, getting the RFPs out, but listing the jobs, see if we get anything, if we don't get anything, you always have the, the option of going to the professional headhunter. But, you know, if, if the priority now is figuring out the interim manager, then you have time. I kind of, I kind of feel like there's an undertone of like, we're under the gun, we're under the gun, we got to go do, do something.
Slow down, take it easy.
So, just, just a thought of putting it out there, see if you get anything, if not, you know, it's not like the, the headhunters are not going to be there when you ask for an RFP on them, so, just my two cents. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
I agree with that, and with what Dustin said. We, Ann is right, we do need to have a broad net, and we can put that request out, in the meantime, we can look at any other resumes that may come in.
Yep, that's correct.
We're not committed...
Exactly.
...to contracting with anybody at this point, we're just putting the feelers out. It costs nothing to do that. So let's go fishing in both places at the same time...
You got it.
...and, and then see what we catch.
Well, we, we won't be advertising at this point, so if, if somebody sends us a resume, it's just on their own volition, they're...
No, we should put out a news release saying that this is, that the jobs are better.
I don't, I don't think that's the way we should go. What I'm just saying is if we get some...
Unsolicited.
Solicitations, unsolicited, yeah, applications, you know, I don't know how we handle that. Dustin, do you have an idea on that?
If they come in, we look at them.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that approach. I mean, and you could even have a stack of, of, if you ultimately decide to approve a headhunting firm, and you've already got a stack of applicants, you just hand them to them and allow them to proceed with their process.
But what I was trying to say is we don't want to advertise at this point.
Well, whether you realize it or not, it's already happened.
Lauren Harvey, I'd just like to say, let's not be, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish. I agree with Ann, this is a very important thing, we need background checks, we need all kinds of things. I say get the pro in immediately, and get started, just as long as we set a contract with them to do a job for a certain amount of money, what's the difference when they start? Let's get them going, and the board should take all of its time to find an interim manager right now, rather than worry about that. Let the pros worry about what they're going to do, and find somebody either within, or whatever you're going to do, and get them out here and get them working as temporary. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Please say your name.
Marcel, and I've been a manager, and done, done a lot of hiring. I think you should just look at, put, put it out, to put the net out there, and see what happens. You might find someone just down the street that can fill the job sufficiently, you know what I'm saying, without paying a hedgehunter, headhunter. And a headhunter is always negotiable as well, no matter what, so what you're paying, whatever you're paying, can be 5,000 to 20,000, or whatever you want, but that's all negotiable within your own negotiations, you can do that. So I think you should put the net out there, do whatever you have to do, and somebody might just show up on your back door, anytime. So whatever, that's...
Okay, Marcel, yeah.
Anybody further with the public? Back to the board, anything more you want to talk about? Yes?
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
What's the next thing?
Interim general manager.
For those in the public, the, the motion and the second and the vote we just took was to approve an RFP to get it rolling. I think I heard some discussion out there, people were wondering what we were voting on, yes.
Sometimes we don't know.
Sometimes we don't know, yeah. You might have to remind us.
Actually, Cliff, I've moved interim general manager down after the process water recycle project.
You did.
That's what on the agenda, and I've already told the board, except you, I think that that's what I was going to do.
Well, you're just going to surprise me, huh?
So we're going to talk about the project, process water recycle project.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could we, could we consider going back to the interim, since we're kind of on this topic?
If you vote for, if you make a motion and you vote for, we'll go back to the interim, otherwise we'll go into the process.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue with item D, 4D, interim general manager.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, what's, what does it matter where it goes?
Well, I just thought, for continuity's sake, we're kind of on this topic, and maybe we could have a...
I think, didn't Dustin have to leave at 5:00?
And he has to leave?
No, I'm, I kicked my other meeting, so...
Oh, okay, we were doing that for your...
I was going to mention that earlier, but I thought there was somebody else that had a 5:00 clock...
I got 5:15, I'm out of here, so, but that's 45.
We have a board room, it's going to...
You can do it for me.
You're the guy.
Yeah.
Let's do this.
Okay, let's do it.
We need a vote. We need a vote.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so 4 to 1?
So the motion to continue with 4D, 4 to 1.
Correct.
I think it's 4D, Mr. President.
Yes, need a motion on something.
Okay.
Well, we can talk about it without a motion.
Yeah, we're going to talk about it.
So interim general manager, consider appointment of an interim general manager and terms of appointment of interim general manager, and action may be taken. So I make a motion that we ask Kevin if he is interested in that position. And do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, now, now we have discussion. So I'm going to be first on this one. I'm going to read off, I, I did some serious thought on this and some calculations, I'm just going to read some things off here. An interim manager will need time to come up to speed on the organization and the current events requiring action. Kevin already possesses that knowledge. An interim manager will need to be updated on all the current projects and work underway. Kevin will most likely be the one to educate the interim manager. Bringing in an interim manager from outside the organization will require additional internal work, such as background checks, new employees set up in the system, introduction to department heads, et cetera. Kevin will not require any of that. Hiring a new interim manager will cost the district, based on the current manager's salary, on an annual basis, $147,388.70. Kevin will still be making his annual salary of $114,150.40 on an annual basis. These two salaries together equal $261,539.10. If we accept Kevin's offer to assume the interim manager position, we will save the district $114,150.14.40 on an annual basis. Once the replacement manager has been chosen and comes on board, he or she will still need to be educated on all of the projects and daily operations of our district. This will again fall on Kevin, and it does not seem unreasonable for him to assume the position of assistant manager, with the opportunity to advance in the future to manager. It's much less expensive to promote employees, they already have organizational knowledge, they have proven loyalty to the organization, it's a fairly seamless transition to new duties, and statistics show that the average amount of time to reach full potential can be as high as two years for executive positions. Team culture is already in place if we hire Kevin. This is the best way to instill loyalty in your workforce, and will go a long way to maintaining quality workers. And why would we go outside of our organization to hire when we have capable employees already able to assume positions in advancement? That's all I have to say on it.
Okay, I'll, I'll take over.
Okay, I'll take over. You're, I agree with everything you say on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, except the money part. And he won't save his whole salary because I'm sure as we asked Dustin last meeting in closed session to approach Kevin about this, and he submitted a
Increased proposal.
Increased proposal to us, that he would be willing to assume these duties.
But we will be saving his salary, Ann, because, because
On his whole salary, because we're going to be paying him more to assume duties.
But, but, but we, if we hired an interim manager
Saving the whole manager's salary.
If we hired an interim manager and paid him George's salary
Of course, of course.
We'd be paying that amount anyway.
Of course, we're going to save that.
So, if he just takes that one and drops his $114, where I actually saved him that, right?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we did the math in different ways, but we arrived at the same answer.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, what I see is, he's asking for an extra, I have his salary a little higher than what you stated here. I have it at $118,730, and George is a little higher, but he's asking for the $147,388, which is about 2,400 more a month for each month he serves as interim. And I find no problem with that because it's much cheaper than an interim manager at, say, $10,000 a month.
Yeah, and basically, we're going to expect him to continue to do his full-time job
Plus.
and assume the job of another individual, which is putting two jobs into one. At the very least, we should be able to pay him what the manager was making.
Don't you have a wife and kids?
Okay, so that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Audience?
Well, have we finished with?
Everybody sitting here not saying anything. Go ahead, the audience.
Does everyone know
I'll throw my two cents in when it comes back.
...have a proposal from Kevin, that Kevin's interested in this position?
Do we, it might be nice for us to put it up?
Well, I should be blamed for that.
Put it up and so the public can see what he is proposing.
So, while you're doing that, Kevin, for the public's benefit, the board tasked me with just approaching Kevin, would you be interested in assuming an interim GM role? And if so, what would be your terms? So, the board, last meeting tasked me with that. Kevin then thought about it, communicated those to me, and that's what you have on your, there's actually two separate agreements. So, Kevin, why don't you then take over and explain what your proposal is?
Sure. So, I would accept the offer to serve as the interim GM with the terms that are stated in my agreement.
It's going to be DM, no?
Yeah, DM.
Oh, yeah, district man, interim district manager. Yeah, so I would accept the position with the terms, and Cliff is correct, the terms would be that I would be filling both duties at the same time, the general manager's duties and the CFO's duties. I feel like through the, through my time here and through this process, I feel like there's, I feel like the assistant general manager position would be a well-earned position that I feel like I should assume upon the new general manager coming on board, being that I would be the one getting him up to speed and also serve in the absence, if he was ever absent, to be the general manager, be with the thought that I've kind of experienced it, I've had the knowledge of it, and I've done it for the extended period of time as the interim GM. I believe that the salary that I'm proposing is fair. I believe that it does warrant an increase in salary for that position during that interim time and for afterwards. So, I'll answer any questions at this point.
Can I add a couple points, Kevin? So, item six
Which one?
of this agreement, next page. So, Kevin was concerned about, I don't think I'm speaking out of line here, Kevin, but correct me if I'm wrong, you didn't want to be permanent GM.
Not with this, not with this agreement. So, the, this agreement was not to be stated as a permanent GM position. So, that's
So, this has a life expectancy, so to speak. In section six, there's, we set it out basically where you can terminate this on any of those events. Kevin can terminate, the board can terminate if you're not happy, or we hire somebody really quick, or six months. So, I just wanted to point that out. I thought that was an important provision. Kevin, would
Kevin, if, if it were to take us longer for some reason than six months to find an acceptable replacement, is that a drop-dead date?
That's a renegotiation date. So, if, if this is there to make the board make action, so that the board can't just sit there and go, well, we got somebody in place, we're not going to do anything, we're going to not hire a headhunting firm. So, this is more of an action item type thing to allow them. I think it's a renegotiation item at that point. So, if you guys are, it's kind of like the NPDS permit, right? Are you guys moving in the direction to fix the problem? And so, if you guys are moving in the direction to fix the problem, of course, I would have no problem extending the dates from that period.
Good. Now, if you can get that telegraphed to the regional water quality guys.
I guess, was that part of my duties? Well, Kevin, since you said that, I mean, would it be amenable to just put a sentence in there, say this could be extended?
No, just leave it.
Or just leave it?
Yeah, that's expensive.
Can be, I'll tell you, can be extended as long as there's reasonableness behind it.
We've got it on audio and maybe even visual now.
Kevin, would you go to the other agreement? Okay, so, so this is the agreement that would take effect, Kevin alluded to this, when the new GM is in place. When this interim GM agreement is terminated, then this is an amendment to his existing CFO contract. So, what Kevin's asking for is a change in title and then a change in salary. But I've, in reading this again, preparing for this meeting, Kevin, this change in salary would not take effect until the first day you're back in your CFO duty role, right?
I'm not looking for salary change between now and
Yeah, okay. So, we just need to clarify that paragraph five salary takes effect under your proposal the first day that you're no longer the interim GM, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, because otherwise you'd be making less money.
Right. So, as I said in my email to the board, this is a proposal. You can accept it, you can reject it, or you can propose changes, which is in effect a counterproposal that then kicks it back to Kevin to accept or reject.
Well, I think I've already made a motion that we asked Kevin to be our interim manager, and it was seconded, so.
So, for this agreement, we're good?
Yes.
You can take a vote. Does we have more discussion?
So, Dan, did you have any, Dan, did you have anything on?
Yeah, the only thing to Kevin's benefit that I might mention to you, I, out of curiosity, I saw some PID crews out working today, and I swung in and talked to them and asked them what their opinion would be, and all of them said they would be tickled to have you be in that position, so.
Thank you.
That's a positive for you, so.
It's very positive. No, I think it's a great choice. I'm happy that you have stepped up. Well, I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, I'm the guy that has to say my piece, probably going to be the, I think this is a huge mistake. It's going to limit applications where people are looking for a permanent job on the staff. Here, you've got a staff member who's being promoted into the job, basically, with the possibility that he would be the permanent manager. One fellow that's interested in the job that I've talked to said, well, that just pretty much tells you who the new manager's going to be of the district.
Not, not even, not even close.
He just said he didn't want to be the permanent manager.
Not even close.
Then it's, the second one is too much power. We have a man that's both doing the finances and the management of the district. And his performance on financial situation that we find in the district has not been good. We're not in good financial order, and this is partially, Kevin has credit for that. So, we have a financial situation, which, if you base him on his previous work with the district, has not been the greatest. We tried to, when Doug was on the board, we tried to strengthen his job for that he could do a better job with the finances, and that was a failure. I just think that this is not a good idea at all, and I'll open it to the public then.
May I speak?
Okay, George.
Thank you. This is for the, everyone else's new board members. I just want to let you know I completely disagree with President Kellogg's statements. The financial situation of the district that he's referring to is the ultimate responsibility of the board. Repeatedly, in Kevin's reports, in his verbal comments, in his written comments, he cautioned the board about needing to increase rates and increase revenue. So, that responsibility does not fall on Kevin. We get annual audits, that we get glowing reports on. The CFO's job is really to make sure that the money's handled properly, and that controls are in place and that they're followed. And that happens day in, day out, all the time. So, I do, could not let that sit. Kevin's efforts are exemplary. I've had a person that does bond that we've worked with in the past that found financing for us. He finds financing for special districts all over the state of California. He told me that Kevin is the best CFO he has worked with. So, I just want to make sure that's clear and on the record. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to comment before Dustin gets going, that for a couple of years now, the old board was laid within meetings after meetings that they failed in their financial responsibility. And really, those men followed Kevin and George's lead. There were, very often, there was two of us, and that was Doug and me, voted against it, or Doug would hold up a little plaque he had, saying what the financial situation was and so forth. And three board members would go right along with it. And as far as I can tell, in that thing, it wasn't the board's responsibility, it was the board being led by George and Kevin, and they went along. They didn't disagree, it was a huge rubber stamp. That's why the recall movement came up. And I think this is a mistake. I'm sure Kevin's a good financial officer, but I'm also sure that he doesn't need this reward and increase in pay. And if it costs us more money as a district to hire somebody else, that for intern, a true intern, he's not an employee now, that would have, I think that would be far better off for the district. So, I open to the public once more. What do you want to say, Dustin?
I think you've raised a good question about internal controls. So, it's, I want to ask staff about this, because my understanding is, you receive, you prepare a check, then it goes through a protocol, and ultimately, the GM signs. How would that change if you were the
So, there's, there's two signers at all times, and I actually sign on most all of the checks myself. I don't prepare the checks. The checks are prepared through the accounts payable, and they're signed off through multiple steps. I would be the one signing off on purchase orders at this point, under the authority of the general manager. So, the authority would be the 5,000 purchase and the $25,000 purchase. So, there is that aspect of, of the internal controls that would be, you know, not gray, but maybe not perfect. But there is a lot of organizations, smaller organizations, that have that same setup, that you have that same control. The control still would be with the board for any board authorized purchases, and then all purchases, all check registers still would be under board.
Does, I know Christie's
Everything goes across George's board table. In other words, goes through the office sequence, and George is the one that approves everything, is the way I've understood it for years, on purchase orders and everything else. So, now we have a financial officer and George, equivalent to two men, and that's what I meant about power, in running the district's affairs. There's no check there, there are balance.
Bill, our, our purchasing bylaws state specifically how those large purchases are to be handled, and that's the board's responsibility to approve or disapprove those expenditures, not the general manager or the CFO. We're the ones that ultimately, in fact, when, my early on the board, I, that was one of my big issues, was I saw things that should have been approved by the board and weren't. And I can tell you going forward, they will be from now on.
Well, there's also
So, that's the checks and balances. There is no uncontrolled power there.
Yes, there is. There's $5,000.
George had, the same authority that I would be receiving in the interim, George had that same authority. He had signing authority on checks, and he had approval authority of purchase orders. So, they're actually, thinking of it, there is no difference between what is currently happening and what would be happening.
And you'd still require two signers, so somebody independent of you.
There's always two signers on every check.
Who would that, would that be Christie?
It's either Christie or it's George Ann at this point. Right now, we have four signers, is George, myself, Christie, and George Ann, and with George leaving, there would be three signers.
And I almost never sign checks, because I'm the one approving the purchase, so I stay away from that as much as I
But if there's no one here, that's
Then I do. Public, please.
Wally Schmidt, Henshaw. I've heard the public criticize over and over the management of PID. And now, this afternoon, I'm hearing the board criticize the management of PID, when in fact, the responsibility is the board's, and I think that's incredibly unfair. The responsibility is the board's, the board has the information, and to try to lay off this depletion of reserves on management, because the board didn't have the intestinal fortitude to raise rates as everybody, as management recommended in 2011, I think that's just appalling.
I want to comment on this 2011 business. I was one of the board members, along with Larry Duncan, that stopped the raise and knocked it back. We heard about that for a year and a half. It amounted to about a half a million dollars. The people in the district got along just fine without having it, because people, it was a tough time. This town is a poor town, it's not a rich town, and this is why it was done at the time, and it didn't, the district functioned just fine. Now, I don't see any problem with it.
But the reserves eroded as a function of that.
It could have been different if the management had done something different. You weren't here.
That's true.
Yes, why don't you sit down?
I have five minutes. I'd be happy to stand here for five minutes.
Okay, but you don't really know what you're talking about, so, and it, so, whatever, stand there for five minutes if you want.
We appreciate your comments, Wally. Thank you.
Excuse me, may I go back to the letter by Mr. Nichols, the applicant?
Sorry.
If that's his first presentation to the board, would be one step back. He has two misspelled words there, his manager, and he didn't put a consideration on the, a comma at the end of consideration there. If he's your first presentation, would you evaluate that?
You have to look at Mr. Nichols, he's behind you.
I'm sorry, but I mean, if that's his first presentation, I would approve it at that, and my resume
Spell check is not working real good, huh?
I just want to, I just want to inform the public, I am not Martin Nichols.
Okay, Dickinson, I'll be the other frog and join you in the punch bowl. I don't think it's a good idea either. I think that, quite honestly, if you regress far enough through this process of where the money went, and it'll kind of clear up what he was trying to allude to. Back in 2010, we had a surplus of combined money of, at $10 million approximately. That money went out during the time that the, we had the construction of this place going on, purchasing property to do so, and also, we had the automated meters, which, that contract for the automated, automated meters, we paid $5 million for what other people were getting done with $2 million for that same amount, cost for cost. So, there was money going out. It didn't go out because we didn't charge enough back then to the public. The money wasn't, wasn't managed properly at that time. And I can see where Bill's coming from. And I, and I think that, my opinion on the interim, I think we need to just jump right past that and just go focus on getting the guy in here to take care of the job, shelve this thing, whatever it takes. this thing, whatever it takes, and get somebody in here as soon as you can, as a general, as a manager, on the whole. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening. Lauren Harvey. What you guys are proposing is, you're proposing that we, we jailed Billy the Kid, that we're going to hire one of his gang members to run the show. And, and so, the recall happened because of how bad this was all managed. Everybody knows that, everybody knows that. Whether you agree with it or not, it's just a fact, the way it is. And Kevin, I, you know, he's a, he's a fine bean counter, and I'm not saying he's not. But, but I, I personally worked hard on the recall because I was tired of the gang of three. And so, I really hate to see a new board get swayed into, into promoting and, and going forward with one of the gang of three that caused the recall in the first place. It, it's crazy, it's, it's, you know, you, it, it's just, I'm just lost for words. And then, and then if we, if we promote him, if we promote him, you, it sounds like to me, you propose, or he at least proposes, that he gets $143,000 when he steps down, back down to the other. So basically, what you're doing is you're doing them, them wild grass, I say that with a G, them wild grass raises that happened in the past. And, 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 and I don't see it. And Kevin's a good man. I don't have a problem with Kevin as a bean counter, that's not what I'm saying. I just, I just think that the plastic meters, I'm kind of okay with the, with the building now, I've kind of got over that, but the plastic meters, I'm not going to live long enough to get over those things, folks. I can tell you right now, that was a boondoggle that couldn't have happened. And yes, you can say, you can say that the, that the board was responsible for it, but let's remember what the board was. It was three people sitting at that end of the bench that did what Mr. Barber wanted them to do, basically. They never opposed anything he wanted to do. Remember when we had the vote thing, and it come along and we saved the $20,000? What did we do with it? We didn't put it back in the general fund. We give it to them as bo, as bonuses. Oh, well, we saved that money. That was, that was Mr. Duncan's logic. I got the film. It's, it's terrible. And I, and what I'm, what I'm trying to impress on you guys is, please, please, let's, let's, let's not go for the gang of three to do this. Let's, you know, Kevin's fine as a bean counter, and I'm not saying he's not, but, but the thing about it is, it's been the gang of three. I can bring you in the video, they're all looking at each other, smirking when people are talking about stuff in the past. It's just crazy to do that. I don't, I understand why Kellig wants, wants to search outside, and I, I'd really appreciate it if you guys did too, and try to remember why you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Mary Esala, I want to kind of come at this from a practical perspective. I sit on the Board of Directors of the Paradise Plains Property Owners Association, and we had one person quit her job, and they moved the person below him into that position and hired no one else. He now has no time to get his job done. So I want you to consider that seriously. Kevin's working full-time already for the district. How is he going to handle two full-time jobs in 40 hours a week? Just my two cents worth.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
My comment to that, if I might, is this, this is all very open-ended. If we dislike anything, we can terminate immediately. If Kevin's unhappy and thinks that he can't achieve the goals of accomplishing both duties, he too can terminate that immediately. So I think we've got a chance to try it.
My guess is too, he's going to be working more than 40 hours in order to get the job done, and that's why I think he deserves a little higher salary for that. But I hear what the audience is saying, a couple of you, but, you know, I don't see a gang of three, I, I see an intelligent board with differing views, that, quite honestly, the previous board, I didn't think had the knowledge to be a cohesive board. And I think that now we do. We, we, we understand the issues, we're all, you know, I'm not invested to the point where it's personal to me. I'm here because I want to help my community, and at such time as I think I'm not doing that, I'll step down and leave, because I got plenty of things to do besides this. But as long as I'm here, I'm 40 years of running a successful business, which I started in my garage, which, which does $5 million a year in sales and employs 14 people, and we've got a darn good reputation. We take care of our employees, we do business right, and I know how to run a business, and I see things going in the right direction here. And this stuff that I laid out earlier about Kevin, I didn't just come up with that idly, I gave it a lot of thought. And I put myself in the position, if this were my company, how would I run it? What would I do? And this seems like the only practical thing to do. It's, it makes sense, so. We've, we've already had a motion and seconded, so roll call vote?
I have the motion.
You're not in position to make a roll call vote? Go ahead with the roll call vote.
She was going to read back the...
When I had the motion out, was that Director Jacobson moved to ask Kevin if he's interested in the interim manager position. And then it was seconded by Director Rice. What I had?
Correct. Do you want to change that verbiage, instead of, "Are you interested?"
Well, yes. I guess we need to, we actually need to say that...
Motion to accept the interim general...
Yes, we make a motion to accept both agreements, both contractual agreements for the interim manager and the change in position and salary, once the interim manager has been replaced with a permanent manager.
So I heard, before, there's a second. I heard two minor changes. We're changing the title interim general manager to interim district manager. Okay?
Okay.
And then I wanted to clarify, consistent with what Kevin said, that in his amendment to the employment agreement, his existing employment agreement, that that change in salary is not effective until the day after the termination of the interim district manager agreement. So you okay?
Correct.
Good. Okay, so the motion is with those two minor changes to accept the two agreements and authorize
Can you run by that last statement in regards to the salary change? Because I was under the impression that that was something that could happen, not should happen.
I thought we were just voting on the one first.
Yeah, what happened there?
Are they linked together? We can't do one?
That's Kevin's proposal, is there's, there's an, well, why don't you explain it, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I wanted to link them two, so that once the interim position was complete, that I completed the interim GM, that I would slide into the position of the assistant general manager upon, upon the new general manager being put on place.
Hmm, so that's, that has to be accepted as part of this or not?
That's correct.
Hmm, then I'm not sure about that one. That's something that I'd like to look at with time.
And the, and would your job description change then?
Yes.
For assistant district manager?
George, Anna, could you roll back up to that second agreement?
The title would change.
Yeah, I think you're right. We'd have to look at the job description.
So to answer that question, yes, it would change, his title would change. I don't think, from a practical matter, his duties would change, because Kevin has essentially been acting in that role for a number of years. When George is out of the office, George writes a note and essentially assigns Kevin the duties of, of the interim general manager.
Because I don't, I don't have a problem with the increase, temporary increase, but I'm not sure I want to go along with permitted increase afterwards, automatic.
I want to just add a question that came up in my mind. The, the fact that, I was reflecting back in November, when George took his leave of absence, Kevin filled in for him, not his interim, but I guess call it the same thing. And he did that maintaining his same salary, I presume. Now, as we're entering into this first contract of him being the interim and going in at the full salary that George was at, doesn't really seem appropriate, because he doesn't have that length of time as a general manager that you would put him in. Is, is that the same salary that George is making now?
Correct.
Okay, so that seems like a little excessive to start him out of, out as a full salary. Then the other predicament that I see with this, as him, as he would be changing his title, once a new district manager, he would be the assistant manager, that changes his whole role, because now we don't have a chief financial officer. So now we're, we're creating, building or growing the, the staff, and that was what a lot of our predicament was with the recall, was the cost of staff. So I see that this is kind of growing into, it's like chewing that ball of wax, it's getting bigger and bigger. I would just recommend that, because official interim isn't needed until, what, May 8th, that you have a little more time to make this decision. It seems like we're, we're being forced into a decision-making situation, and I'm not proposing the outcome of the situation. I've never been, you know, involved in the outcome, because it, that, that's going to be your responsibility, but I think we're, we're, I'm feeling that you're being pressured into making that decision today. And this was a special meeting, and it seems like we've got, you know, clearly, another board meeting away, not the one next week, but even next month. And that should be something that Kevin should be able to handle for the district, being as he's vested in the district, and be able to flush this out a little bit more, because it sounds like we're going to be adding staff and, and complicating his, his role as, as chief financial officer. So I, my suggestion to the board is just, let's take a deep breath and, you know, continue that, and research that a little bit more on the contract that he's asking for. Thank you.
Thanks, Rainey.
Rainey, I'd like to make one comment. If, if we were to leave Kevin in his current position and hire an interim manager, the interim manager would expect to make something similar to what George Barber was making, especially if it's just a temporary job. And then when we total those two up, it's going to be extremely more than what Kevin is asking for to do both jobs. So, so we're actually saving money. In addition to that, if we're asking for an interim manager for, say, six months, as Kevin is saying he would be available for, we're going to take two or three months just to bring this new person up to speed, which means that Kevin is going to be taxed with that anyway. And then, by the time we get this guy up to speed, maybe we found a new one that he gets replaced with, and it would have been money just thrown away, I think.
And that's why I said, like, the nation is doing, you take a deep breath, reflect on what you're doing with that.
No, I understand that, but we can't, it wouldn't be fair to ask him to do George's work and his and not be compensated for it. I wouldn't ask any of my employees to take over a job of somebody who just quit and not pay him anymore.
George, you want to talk about?
I just want to clarify something, because there's a lot of discussion about Kevin stepping in when I'm on vacation. It's a whole different animal. When I'm on vacation, I'm checking email every day, I'm answering his questions, I'm calling him, I'm available. That's not going to be the case for this interim situation, so that, it's apples and oranges, and I just wanted to clarify and make sure everyone understood that. When I went on vacation, I didn't just disappear off the face of the earth.
Which you will be now.
Technology let me do that. Yeah, okay, Lauren.
Because there's...
Sorry. Lauren Harvey, for clarification here, let's, have I missed something here? If, if Kevin takes over the job for six months, and then you find a new guy, and then you don't want to downpay him on his pay, so what you've done is you've given him a lifetime $20,000 or $25,000 raise?
No, we're not. We're down, we're downing his wages when he's no longer...
Okay, so what is that going to come down to? Back to his 114 that he's got now? He probably wouldn't want to have that, because that wouldn't seem, and so what you've done, so what you've done is you, he stepped in being a good person for six months, helping out, which is really a good deal, but he's also helped himself, because he's got a lifetime raise without having to argue with the board over it, because he's got you guys by the short hairs, it appears. So, so I, I just don't, I just don't see what the problem was all along, ladies and gentlemen, was this, this board and these three, the gang of three sitting over here, spent money like it was somebody else's money, which in fact, it was, and that's the problem we're in right now. We've spent money that we just ain't got, and it's all great to reward somebody, you know, I, I spent a lot of years in air conditioning, I won't go on about it, but I never got paid what I did when I went outside of Paradise. When I worked in Paradise, I got a hell of a lot less money, but I wanted to be here. I went outside when I had to make more money. And, and the thing is, we can't, we, we, we can't just keep going, ladies and gentlemen, at the rate we were going for the last 12 years. We can't keep going. We're going to have plastic meters on, on the kitchen sink and the bathroom tub, you know, so, so, because people haven't spent money responsibly around here, and it just doesn't seem fair to reward somebody, because you guys are a little bit afraid of how the business is going to work for the next three or four months. And then, and it'd be okay if we were going to pay Kevin, let's say we're going to pay Kevin an extra $100,000 a month to do the job, but when it's over, he drops back down to his 114, right where he was, and he, and he eats the title he's got right now. I'm way better off with that than I am to give a person a lifetime achievement award and, and more money. It's crazy. You're just, you're just adding to the, to the, I, I'd like to see you guys go to the coffee shops tomorrow morning and sell that. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I, I think I have a problem with that, too. I have no problem with the increase in salary during the time that he's fulfilling that, but then to change his title and increase it automatically later, I got a problem with that. I don't have a problem with visiting that at the end of the six months, but I got a problem with just automatically by this agreement ratifying that now.
So, so can I have a question for Dustin, just a clarification? This is presented to us from Kevin, but we have, we can say we accept one and maybe we'll visit the other at a later time?
Yeah, but that would be a counterproposal.
Counterproposal.
And Kevin can, then it, the ball's in Kevin's court, and he could say, oh, that's fine, or no, I, these are my terms, and that's it.
Can you pass the word on to him? What we're...
I would like to entertain a motion to table this till the next board meeting or another special meeting, since there's just...
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have to satisfy that somehow, yeah.
But I, I understood the motion that we were only accepting the interim general manager agreement, not the amendment.
See, me too.
That's what I voted yes on.
You want to change your motion? And then your motion?
Well, we just have to let it die, and then we can pick it up again.
It's, it's what, $11,000 more a year?
This is what we wanted to approve.
It's $11,000 more a year to recognize that somebody has stepped up and is performing at a higher level, and it's a pathway to promotion for him somewhere down the road, should the next guy that we hired decide to retire. Maybe he moves into the management position, because now he's earned it. You hire from within, not from without, unless you have to. If you've got somebody who meets the qualifications now, why would you throw them away and then have to start all over again with somebody else?
One thing that's been forgotten in all of this, and it's like Kevin's going to do all the things that he's done. We have Jim's here, who runs the water treatment plant and oversees the lake. We have Keith, who runs the field crews and lines out the work there. I don't think Kevin is qualified to tell them what to do. He's been doing the work in the office with accounting and so forth, and on occasion, he's taken over, but with George at long distance, making decisions. Kevin may have had experience as an intern...
Kevin may have had experience as an intern, well, George is on vacation, but he really didn't. I know George well enough that he's, he's going to want to control things. So, he would talk back and forth and so forth. I, I just think this is a huge mistake.
Bill, didn't you say a general manager could take that permanent position? Surely, he would qualify as at least a general manager with his experience, so why would he not be?
Why do you reward somebody with poor performance on the finances of this district with the biggest job in the district? I, I just, it just floors me. I've been here the longest, I've sat through I don't know how many meetings and watched this go on, and I'm saying, you guys are being taken in, I gotta watch what I say, by the same deal. These guys are really nice people, they really talk to you nice and everything, and I just think, you don't know the whole situation, and this is a mistake.
Well, I have to say, Bill, all this happened before my time on the board.
Yes.
I can't speak to that.
I can't.
I, I can't speak to it one way or the other, but you're asking me to make a decision as a board member, from my experience since I've been on this board, which is, what, about a year now? And, in the year that I've been here, every document that I've seen that Kevin has presented have been stellar, they've been very professional, from charts to financial statements, they've all looked good to me. I'm a businessman.
I'm not talking about the books, I'm talking about how the money was spent in the management group.
That's a function of the board, and the board's decisions to tell the general manager what to do. Kevin's job, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, is to pay the bills. And he's told what to do with the money. He doesn't decide on his own that he's going to build a new building, or buy firefly meters and upgrade the meter system. He simply writes the check when the board decides that.
Okay, you want to give him the authority to say how many fireflies he should buy and so forth. Keith and the field crew can give him that advice. Because Kevin won't know.
We, we will, we will decide, because we are the board, we, we tell them on a major expenditure whether or not they can do it, based on our knowledge together as a board. So.
Okay, I, I've said about all I can say, and I'm just digging myself a deeper hole.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion and a second on the floor, we have a motion and a second on the floor, but I think that the motion, it was misunderstood, because I too was getting ready to vote, but it was not on what I thought that I was voting on.
I would like to withdraw my second.
So she's withdrawing.
You're going to, the motion will fail.
And so it fails.
Okay, the motion fails.
Because.
But it's, it's 5:23, and I know some people needed to get out of here. Would you like to say something before we?
Can we just, can we just table this? And Cliff, you know, you're, you're forcing your point like five or six times here, we don't appreciate that, we want you to know that.
Okay.
Thank you, in the future, we might have to do you.
Well, I don't work for you individually.
I realize that, but I'm telling you.
I work for the district as a whole.
That's right.
And, and.
But if we, we might want to recall you in the near future.
If the district as a whole doesn't like the job I'm doing, they can tell the lead.
I'm telling you how it is.
Okay, all right. I probably done, okay, folks, I know how you feel, and I know, I've heard.
I don't need to be reelected, I just say what's true.
Well, okay.
Five or six times.
Okay, what you didn't understand just happened is the motion's been withdrawn, it's 5:20 something, so the rest of the agenda is, will be tabled to the next meeting or the next special meeting, and I, it's motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Yes, you can.
One comment here, and I understand the misunderstanding of the amendment, and I wanted to ask Kevin on the amendment. And I have to agree a little, I did a little research on assistant managers, okay, it's fairly common, as everybody knows, in districts. This would be a little different, because you'd be combined financial officer and assistant manager, but still, I think it would make sense. But, I think we would need to look at your job description and, and make some changes to massage that and make that, you know, cohesive, okay?
Sure.
And if you were amenable to that, on your amendment, and maybe we could take a look at your salary at the same time, like what you were saying.
I have no problem looking at it in the future.
Yeah. Would that, would that be an acceptable change, shall we say, that we?
Is it, is it a deal killer to hire you for your request on your, your original, and then look into the amended in the future?
I, I would, I would entertain the, the melding of the job description as, as a, as a kind of a, a step in the direction.
Future item to consider.
But I don't want this to die as a part of the agreement of the combining of the two agreements.
Okay.
So it's, so it's all or nothing? You'd like us to table this tonight?
Basically what you just said, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, can we, can we change it a little bit with, with some wording that says we will?
I would like to suggest that Kevin put a resume in. I was on the board when he was hired, I know somewhat of his background, I don't know how much you know, so I would suggest that Kevin give you a resume to help you understand who you're talking to. After all of you going outside the district, you would ask for a resume, you would ask for background checks on this, the same thing. But I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn, and we'll talk about it at another meeting, we'll negotiate with Kevin at another meeting. This was set to go to 5 o'clock, and it's already over a half hour.
A lot of things go past the deadlines that are set, okay? I'm just saying this.
We're willing to continue.
Yeah, we're willing to continue here, this is very important, this is a very important matter, I think it's, we're talking about right now. Bill, no disrespect, no disrespect, I'm sorry, but.
We've got, geez.
But, so, so to answer your question, yes, I would be entertaining a, a job, job description change, that would be fine with me. And if, if, if there's a salary issue, a counterproposal, I would entertain a counterproposal, if that's something that is, that is, that is kind of locking.
So I guess what we're asking is, will you take the interim manager position without this additional contract of being agreed upon tonight?
Uh, not, not tonight.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a motion for adjournment, please. Okay, we're going to adjourn, anybody? Okay, thank you all for coming.